All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Ron, as soon as you get back, we'll... Let's go with Steve.
Okay, just very quickly to your sheets, not much changed from last week. I already mentioned one of them, the Circuit Court Judge's office security after it completed, the camera was installed on Monday, and so they have video visual outside this door that they can access either key or punch code or with a push button inside the secretary office. And then we're going to go ahead internally and replace the ceiling tile for that little foyer area that was created and put a little more lighting because once we closed off that, those two arch areas, it darkened it up a little bit. And then the jail window replacement, that is on schedule to start January 3rd. Sheriff's Department has received all the workers that are going to be on that job, and they're running background checks on those folks, because they'll be on site for several days, and so that is being done, and that'll get started. And the other highlighted areas are the changes or any payments that have been made towards those projects. And then last week, you approved the tables and chairs for the fairgrounds, and the tables arrived Monday.
Wow.
Chairs are supposed to be here today, which was, I hope, was pretty extraordinary.
Pretty good.
They brought you on the layers. So everything should be delivered today, and we'll get those ungraded and they'll be ready to put in.
And so... Need to work out of rentals.
Correct, and I instructed Haley to put together some recommendations that I can bring to you. I don't know if you're status for next week. I told her the quality, and I would bring those to you for consideration.
Do we have the rental rate that our tenants have been paying?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I hope we can make it less than what they've been paying for delivery.
Imagine at least, because, you know, they don't have to worry about delivery. Everything's already there.
I think it ought to be less because the delivery is already done.
But we'll have that directly needs to recoup the cost of this.
Well, yeah.
And the intent is to recoup the cost over a two-year period before we replace that.
I mean, you know, instead of $50, $49.95.
And then our signage has arrived, transition over to parking policy, and they're putting up the signs today for the loading and unloading zone and emergency vehicle parking. And the rest of that signage will be changed out after we get some new posts. We're having a post for the permanent handicap parking spots, and we're providing, we're going to provide handicap spots for employees separate from the public spots, and so we have those on separate posts that are portable, where we can legally change those as we need to change them.
And the expectation is that the employee, the local human resources, to have that designation.
Yeah, and you'll see that policy more definitely before your meeting with Department of Ads and like officials, the last part of January.
Steve, along with that, have you found any further information of the lights over in the west parking lot?
Yeah. I haven't got the updated quote to put those above ground. There was a concern by the contractor I talked to, same thing that you talked about, was the span between some of those lights to stretch wire that far, because, you know, the longer you stretch it, it actually puts a strain on the pole itself, so they're looking at that, but I don't have the quote, but they are with that.
Any chance the City of Richmond is going to help with some of that street light?
It's not street light, it's the...
It's all on us. I mean, there was some discussion that maybe City Richmond could help with some street light, okay.
And then lastly, I put a picture of the gazebo. It was delivered Monday morning, and it's set on that pad that was prepared by the Highway Department, and now my staff out there will anchor it, will put four-by-four, will put four-by-four posts in the ground, under the floor, below cross step, and those will be lagged to the runners to anchor the building. And then I think it makes sense to me that we'll go around like this way.
So is that installed now on the ground?
Yeah.
It's been delivered.
Have we ever executed a naming ice cream?
I don't.
Did you write one? I don't think we ever got anything back.
I've not seen the colors or anything from Farm Bureau.
They were supposed to tell us what their signage was.
I'll make it out.
Information from us.
Yeah, I'll reprint the agreement, if you don't have a handicap, do that, please. I don't, I think there was something there. I think Brad had given it to them, to somebody there, I don't know, Master or somebody.
And then on that photograph, what you don't see, there's a couple of cupolos that go on top of that, they're moving out later.
I can see the installation.
So that's...
It's all I have there.
Okay, it's going to look good out there during fairgrounds, gathering places.
Since we're on TV, and I, I told Haley, I said, "Could be neat to have the first wedding in there."
I think we should have a Wayne County band in there.
Yeah, that's right.
Like, do you party on instrument?
Yes, in fact.
What do you play?
I'm a saxophonist.
Okay, well, I think we should schedule a concert, a solo concert.
I need some backup, like trumpets and drums, trombones.
All right, thank you, Steve. Ron?
Sorry, I'm late. I was on the phone with Fred in Dorf's office on the 1782 issue. I can mark is working basically with the State Board of Council, forming a resolution. Questions I had in follow-up to our discussion last week, the fact that we use the term levy instead of appropriation, just the net effect that is just leading to 1782 and full force and effect. Yes, that's true. Are there any unintended consequences of passing a resolution before you leave using the levy? He said, "No, you advertise the max, you're at the max." That's fine. He said, "Probably what council didn't want to do would be to adjust their appropriations in their 2024 budget after the first of the year." And he, I, I said, "Well, can we pick the line items?" It's on the general fund. "Hope that we do that," and he said, "Well, probably," but I think he said Marcus went to talk to the State Board of Council, they're doing their use guidelines on the details of the resolution, so apparently, you know, right.
So would we have to re-advertise an entire adjusted budget or just the lines that are changed?
No, I mean, you don't re-advertise it. You submitted the budget to DLGF, DLGF issues the 1782, the 1782 becomes the opposite document unless it's within the 10-day period of deal.
So the money's available in the general fund, the same amount of money, but that was listed in the 1782, but how do we adjust the budget so that the budget...
By reducing the appropriations in a motion after the first of the year, which...
You just reduce a particular line item?
I think you can, because I think we identified the one we wanted to do anyhow with this special project, so whatever it was.
When we submitted this thing, we gave a line item to...
Right.
The error, not error.
Yeah.
It was a misunderstanding of the verbiage, and I talked to them, what I assume we have to do is just have a council after the first of the year reduce that $3 million by the million four, whatever it was, million four, and it doesn't require advertising or any of that.
That was what we want to avoid, because since 1782 is the operative document at the reduced level, if we went ahead and then did a deappropriation of another $1.4 million, we would really be shooting ourselves in the throat. You know, so we won't go into that. It's something that apparently can be fixed by a resolution, and then going forward, you know, if you have the ability to spend money beyond the appropriation, you're just plugged into the original additional appropriation process.
Well, we're on matters of the auditor. Countryside has not yet submitted their bid for their subject system, so there will be a significant amount of money from the opioid settlement funds. Both the restricted and the non-restricted funds have significant unspent dollars in them at year end. Do we need to do anything with those two funds?
They'll have to be re-appropriated.
Yeah, but we don't have to encumber them with council tonight or anything. Plus, in talking to the Attorney General's office, we can expect to receive about $5,000 in 2023 opioid settlement funds before the end of this calendar year. One of the pharmaceutical firms that had a smaller settlement is fully settled, and they're going to send that small amount in December, but the large amount from the retailers especially, and the larger pharmaceutical firms, will not, even though it's 2023 settlement, will not be arriving to counties until 2024. There's some details that have to be worked out in the settlement with various states, and they're holding up all of the funds to states until next year. But that, that large settlement that hasn't, I mean, the large payment to Countryside has not been made. I kept hoping they would get the bid to us this calendar year, but they have not got it yet. It's held up at the state health, Department of Health, so due to no fault of theirs, they will not be receiving that funds in this calendar year. So what do we need to do tonight?
We're going to need to appropriate the rest of the money anyway, so why don't we just re-appropriate the $120,000 as we, as we do that?
Next year, we don't really have to do anything tonight.
We don't have to. We, we could encumber the balance for Countryside. You know, we typically don't, but Steve's going to, Steve's going to do some encumbrances.
Right out of the council's one time, and then that, not to change the topic, but on the tables and chairs, we've already paid for those, and council had indicated that they will pay for those until we get our payment as much, so...
Correct.
So we want to ask council to cover that $30,000. So we have, we have paid credit card bill, yeah, paid for the stuff.
Have the credit card, yeah.
Yes.
Just ordered them.
Today's the last day for the claims, so...
Steve, Mike, I... Mark, what's your preference? Do you want us to encumber those funds or do you want to do addition?
Which one?
Let's talk about the settlement first.
The two funds, the restricted and the unrestricted.
Correct. Countryside, it comes out of which one?
It'll be both.
Both?
Yeah, there's not enough in either one to cover.
Okay, when we get done here, would you go over to my office with me, and we'll take a look at this, and we can decide what we want to do with it?
That's fine.
The other one that Steve's talking about, that's also out of opioid?
No. Countryside's the only one that has not been fully paid.
It's out of, it's out of, council at one time, you spent your fund with this general fund. You giving me a list?
I, I've given you a list, but this is new.
This one's not on it?
Correct.
Put it on it.
Okay.
Are you going to go ahead and do that?
Yep. I'll do it. Have it for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Ron, what else?
Reminder that we have the interlocal with Paper City, it's on the general council tonight, so wish permission to wait tonight, and you have assigned that, I guess.
Which one is this?
Adding the stormwater fees to the tax, to the tax agents.
Let's just, let's just all do it tonight, and you can go over it once with everybody, and then we can add...
I didn't see it on our agenda, so there's going to be a discussion on the health board appointments today or anyway.
Well, I, I have to leave, so I wasn't at that meeting. My understanding was they haven't made a recommendation to us yet.
It was a little bit confusing. They, at the end said, "We don't have a problem with the one resume they got," but they, they didn't make it very clear.
I, that I would have to agree.
I'd like, I'd like for them to make a recommendation. They're going to have to make a recommendation on the, on the new vacancies as well.
I thought they should have voted to make the recommendation to us, but...
But they didn't, is what I understood.
No, they did not. They just asked the general questions, "Does anybody have a problem with it?" And nobody said, "No," but that, I mean, so...
Obviously, that'll be after the first of the year, which is soon to be filled, but the second resignation is effective in this year, so there'll be a five-person board for a few weeks.
Excellent. Okay.
We have up to two more meetings. Yeah, one more. We have one more meeting this year. I would just like to see, you know, they, they said they have recommended or felt qualified. I think that's more, they, they said, Julie, that they had a RM that they have brought forward in the past that they felt was qualified, and the resume that was sent to them, they felt was a qualified candidate.
I should have copied that.
Okay, thank you. I had not seen that. And I would like to see the qualifications of the nurse that they said was qualified before we take action on that.
I don't think anything's taken action on, they didn't vote on that either.
No, and they didn't even know if that person was still interested.
Right.
So again, I think we wait until we do a recommendation from...
Let the process play out.
Process.
It's been longer than we hoped it would take.
I was trying to prod him yesterday to make a decision so we can get an appointment, and, because we know we have a couple coming up, but...
Well, after you get these gaps or these vacancies filled, then I think you can go back and kind of tentatively decide how you want to address the SCA four allocations.
But we actually voted that that was how we wanted to, you might add.
We did. And Tydington's vacancy was for the mayor, but we have to appoint that, right?
We're going to do for this year.
For a year, and then, then the mayor gets the select...
Mayor's appointment.
And then, thank you.
Next year, because there's only one.
Mr. Butler at 20, at the end of...
There's two at the end of 25, and one of those would be the commissioner appointment, and one would be the council appointment. So, and, and we should have that in the minutes, Steve.
Well, probably under...
Let's nail it down.
Yeah, and I would even go farther than that, because I think it really smacks at home rules since you're dealing with, with an ambiguity in, in Senate Act Four that doesn't, creates all these appointments, but doesn't say which ones go where and who makes that determination, I think, given the overall scheme, SCA four, to invest more authority with the county executive as it relates to matters of the local health department, hiring, firing, what have you. I, I think it would be appropriate to have a by orders, which is what I prepared, just like alliances of which ones we wear.
So, so...
We address that after first.
Still in the alliance on the ordinance, so pop that in January. So since it has come up next week, the 27th, it's the last, last Wednesday of this year, Brad is going to be out of town, there's nothing particularly pressing that we'll need to address, there won't be, there won't be 2023 claims, because they cut off claims today.
Maybe one.
Payroll.
Besides payroll, I've got a claim sitting over there now, and I'm trying to decide what we're going to do with it. So it may go to your plan at that last meeting, but we can pay it, and then you can sign it.
So I'm going to leave it to you, Mary Ann. I will be in town if you want to meet on the 27th, we can meet on the 27th, but Brad will not be here.
I won't be here.
There won't be a whole lot in January.
Counsel acted last, at last their meeting to authorize, and transfers of inappropriate limits to keep any plan from being your negative.
Right.
I think we should, I, if there's nothing, again, now that we really have relieved ourselves of the urgency of the health board appointments, I think we could just authorize the auditor to meet payroll, you know, go ahead and pay payroll, and then we can authorize that in January retroactively. Certainly wouldn't want to hold a payroll, so go ahead and, you know, pay that claim. So if, if there's nothing urgent, I think we could cancel, and it's canceled well in advance rather than waiting.
Okay, we'll do that.
I will say that the claims have been coming in when I wanted them.
Great.
And it is working out well with my staff, and it allows more expenditure from your 23 budget.
That'll be helpful.
Yes.
And on the health board, I think if you could just ask them to make recommendations.
That's, that's been the intention, that's their process. I will tell them that we will not make a decision until we have recommendations from the board.
And they do know that we have made those two appointments, but at this point in time, they're going into 2024 with only five board members since the two resignations have taken effect in January.
Was effective.
Oh, he, it was immediate, it wasn't, oh, so he, okay, so...
So they know, they know.
So my question to Ron is, does the health board now with a five-member health board, is their quorum three?
No.
Is it the quorum of those, that their board is down to five, so can they conduct business with only three members present, or do they...
I think they can. I'll, I'll check that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure about...
It might be in the nature of business, okay? Some, I'd have to look at statutes, some statutes require a majority of the board, and others require a majority of the quorum present or voting.
Right, some do, of, of those present and of those, but the board is down to five, as of now, so...
Well, not as of now, as of January one.
Well, I mean, January, I mean, they don't have any board meetings scheduled with six members, but at this point, they will only have a body of five at their next meeting.
Okay. Mike's not here yet, he's next on the agenda, so why don't we go ahead with claims and let's get those out of the way. Going to have to give you more projects to work on, Steve.
Yeah, so your report's longer.
Why, why are we waiting on claims? We need to go back to, first of all, to Steve real quick. The generator, we're getting parts in, is there going to be interruption with our AMX whether installing it with a parking lot or anything?
Well, I mean, like... Probably will be in that emergency zone as they unload, unload.
I didn't know if, you know, we have to coordinate with the courts at all, if there's going to be a trial going on, if there's going to be a parking issue, if they're bringing in, okay.
I want to visualize there in that emergency zone, taking about, you know, a third of that and blocking it off so that when they're pouring concrete or delivering the generator, they can have free access back and forth, but that should be the only interruption.
Do we know where the generator is? Does it...
Because I heard it was in Texas.
Is that something that, you know, unload with a crane, or is that...
Well, it'd be smaller than...
Okay, Mike is here. Michael?
Good morning.
Morning.
So you've done all the calculations, and you have a recommendation for us on these bids?
First one up would be fuel for non-highway. We only had one bid come in on that, that was Coal Alliance, Co-op came in. So the fixed price for the unloaded gasoline is $2.83 a gallon for the unloaded gasoline, escalate, de-escalate is $2.54.5 per gallon. Now, these prices on the fixed pricing is not set until you make the phone call, and then it's kind of where that lands at, but that's where it was, and this is December 6 pricing. So when we put the bids out, we put it all out for one date pricing, so if there's more than one bidder, we can do a fair comparison, apple to apple, on, on what the pricing would be on that day. So that's where it comes in at. My suggestion would be go with Coal Alliance with the fixed pricing. Now, last year, we did 69,000 gallons. As of December 17th, we were at a little over 64,000 gallons of what we used. So what we'll probably do then is we'll carry over, depend on where we end up at the end of the year, we'll carry some of that over, fuse up, either carry it over or you got to pay the difference between, since we are at a higher price, I think our fixed price for 2023 was $3.23412 is what we were paying in 23 on the fixed pricing. So we're having a decrease of a little over 51 cents a gallon at that pricing, so we still should be under where we were for 23 when we lock in the pricing on that, if you decide to go with the fixed pricing, but that would be my suggestion, would be to lock in that pricing. I would only lock in 60,000 gallons. We'll probably have a little less than 4,000 gallons or somewhere around that that we would carry over. We would come up maybe a little short then for 24, but typically then you're going to, that's going to line us back up. We used, went through a little less fuel this year than what we did in 20 in the past, so the, the fuel consumption by the county's been down a little bit for 23. So, but that would line us back up then, but then typically in December, that's our lower pricing on what fuel is, so then when we run out of our contract pricing, it'll be December, hopefully it's that lower pricing what we're going to be picking up for the 25 year.
Would the, would the Sheriff's Department go into Tahoe's? Would that make a significant difference in fuel consumption compared to...
It could to a certain point in degree.
Big vehicle, the... I don't know if it's going to be a significant amount.
I think they started with the Tahoe's this year, so there are some Tahoe's on the road, or they started out this year, but we're probably around 4,000 gallons less this year than what we were in 22, so...
But we are over 60,000, did you say? Or I, I didn't hear.
We're sitting around 64,000, but we got 69,000 on, on our contract that we locked in pricing for. So we're still going to be carrying some over into 24, so I'm just trying to line things up. I know we will probably run out, and we will not over exceed that, but then that way we're not carrying over into 25, so...
So if we run out...
Then you go with the market price, whatever the market price is.
I noticed driving in this morning that Coal Alliance retail price today is $2.55. And this December 6 price, it was, you know, like $2.80 something, $2.89, I think. Is there any chance we can get a fixed price well below that $2.83 to lock in?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the, I had not called them to just lock in the pricing to know exactly what it is. Kind of from what I've been watching on the markets, I think that unloaded has come up a little bit. Kind of from what I've been watching on the markets, I think that unleaded has come up a little bit and, but the diesel has gone down some. But until you make the phone call and get to what the actual price is, you, you, you don't know exactly.
Subject to the market until you.
You're subject to the market until you lock it in. Until you lock it in.
For that particular order.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I mean, Love's was two seventy-nine and Coal Alliance was two fifty-five. So I liked what I saw at Coal Alliance. That was for eighty-seven octane unleaded.
Correct.
So that's pretty, that looked pretty good.
But sometimes you'll see it a little cheaper. When they go in with the fixed pricing, you're a little higher than what you are at the pump because they're trying to lock in their pricing and. And they're playing their angle of the game too, so that's why when you see the pricing, you know, we're, it was nineteen cents higher. Twenty-nine cents higher.
Yeah.
For our fixed pricing, but we're locked in on that pricing and we've been doing fixed pricing for, I don't know how many years now.
Several.
Several, over fifteen years probably, I think in that timeframe and I track the county highway fuel usage. I don't track the, the, at the pump. And we've been doing a few years less at the pump till it got given to me and then we did the fixed pricing at the pump, but we're well over a million dollars. I think the two years that we lost money by going with fixed pricing, one was in twenty twenty when COVID hit and. Nobody drove anywhere and the prices went way down. And then twenty-three, we lost some money in twenty-three, but I was told to lock in prices in October. And I think that come back to bite us by doing it in October, so wait until December.
This year twenty-three or twenty-two?
In twenty-three.
This year we lost money, okay.
Yes. We lost about twenty, so far, I think at the highway department, about twenty-five thousand is what we lost. By not, by going fixed pricing and not going with the market pricing. We paid twenty-five thousand dollars more, but I locked those prices in October of last year for twenty-three.
Waited until December.
Correct. So I didn't do that this year. Nobody asked me to, so I didn't do it.
Okay, so what else have you got?
So that would be for the fuel for non-highway. For the highway fuel department, we had two bids, petroleum traders out of Fort Wayne. And then Coal Alliance out of Richmond. And they did the fix and the flex pricing. We'll focus on the fixed pricing because that's where I would suggest we go to. For the unleaded, petroleum traders came in at a low bid of two dollars, two point four eight eight four cents per gallon. Where Coal Alliance was at two dollars and sixty cents. And then for the diesel, petroleum traders was at three point two three six two and Coal Alliance was at three point one five two five. So my suggestion to go with the fuel bid would be to lock in the unleaded price with petroleum traders. And then lock in the diesel price with Coal Alliance on the fixed pricing. We're gonna have some gallons carried over from petroleum traders going into twenty-four because we didn't use everything either. So I would suggest locking in thirty thousand gallons of diesel and then the seventeen thousand gallons of unleaded. I think we got eleven thousand seven hundred and fifteen gallons of petroleum traders that we'll be pulling over into twenty-four to use up that contract. Part of that is, our winter last year wasn't very bad. Some of the trucks are getting a little bit better gas mileage. We pulled some over from twenty-two into twenty-three, so I think we're dropping that down quite a little bit. I think we were sixty thousand is what we locked in last year on diesel, but this is just kind of getting everything lined back up. By only doing the thirty thousand gallons, but at, at the December sixth pricing, you can see that the significance of. What decrease that we would have by going in with that fixed pricing from what we were paying this year. We would pull the eleven thousand seven hundred and fifteen gallons over from petroleum traders into twenty-four. But we would probably buy fifteen thousand gallons off of petroleum traders. Part of that would be off the market price. Because if I call in for a tanker, I don't want to bring just a partial tanker down of diesel fuel. So seventy-five hundred gallons is what a diesel tanker would come in at, so we'd bring in two full tankers basically from petroleum traders and Coal Alliance. Then the other bids for liquid asphalt, we had four bidders on that. Asphalt Materials, Terry Asphalt Materials, Marathon Petroleum Company, and then K-Tex Specialty Coatings. Given the pricing on that. Typically, we go with one bidder. Asphalt Materials is the little bidder, but we like to accept more than one. In the past, we've gotten to the point where one of the suppliers couldn't supply it to us and then we didn't have the supplier, so. From now on, I just kind of multi-bid and will accept them, but I let them know, hey, this is where we'll probably be buying our material, but we accept their bid on that part of it. Then for hot mix, we do Milestone and Armix LLC is the two bidders that we have. We kind of split that. Milestone's kind of on the eastern side of the county and Armix is over on the western part of the county, so depending on. What side of the county we're on is where we pull from. Milestone's prices went up, but Armix went down quite a significant amount, so. But we still, we won't pull from Armix and take it all away to the other side of the county. We kind of do it territorial. And then for stone and gravel, we have IMI, US Aggregates, and Barret Paving Materials. IMI and US Aggregates both raised their prices. Typically, we're just buying ice sand and the elevens for our ceiling from, from those two. And then Barret Paving, riprap and fifty-three's, they do the limestone where the other ones are the gravel, but Barret kept their pricing the same as what they were in twenty-three. And then for the culvert pipes, we had three bidders on the culvert pipes. Various prices and I think on the next page is kind of, kind of the breakdown of where the prices stand at. This one's a little different and I guess Ron can chime in if he thinks this will work. I have not talked to either one of the companies, but. So Civilcon and St. Regis both put bids in that are very competitive pricing. St. Regis is just a, I think, like on a twelve-inch pipe, three cents cheaper a foot than what Civilcon is. But St. Regis wants to, they don't want to lock in their pricing, so they want to do an escalate, de-escalate, kind of. Depending on what the market does because the middle market's so unpredictable right now at this point in time where Civilcon's a locked-in price. So my suggestion would be just to lock in both of, or accept both their bids. And then we would call typically, I only put in two, two pipe orders a year. We kind of order in the spring and we order kind of in the fall to build our stock back up where we're at. But then we would call St. Regis and see what their current price is of what that market is and then we would buy from whoever the cheapest one is.
Delivery cost or wash.
Right, because they would, the, the cost is, I think, typically it's over ten thousand dollars. There's no delivery fee for either one. So I think if we accept both those bids and then look and see who the, unless one of them. Calls back a little bit and says, no, we don't like that, but we didn't have an escalate, de-escalate calls in the bid part of it, but they added that into that. So I, I don't mind going with that and accepting that and then that would get the best price for the county on that.
So we're just, just accepting those two, not the.
Right, E-three, they're quite a little bit higher than both of one, both of those, so I don't see any.
Is there a big difference in quality in E-three? I mean, the price differentials are.
We never bought off of them, so I don't know. I think they split off of, they're split off of another company at one point in time, but we've never bought off of E-three themselves. They've always been quite a little bit higher.
Yeah, it's a lot of percentage difference.
Okay.
So.
Then the other maybe court, which is, I don't know till I make the phone call. I believe last year we were gonna do the same thing with the, for the highway fuel, the Coal Alliance and the petroleum traders. When I, we were gonna split them up the way they had it split out. Last year, they, when I did that, they kind of wanted that bigger bid and they didn't want the unleaded, so they kind of backed out of it. So then everything went to petroleum traders, so if that would happen again, I guess just. To have clearance for me to be able to go ahead and lock in with the other one, if one of them would happen to back out on, on splitting that unleaded and diesel up on that.
Same, the county, where do county customers go?
This would be for the highway fuel.
Oh, the highway fuel, okay.
Yeah, for delivery on that.
Because I mean, Coal Alliance is the only one.
Right, Coal Alliance is the only one. For the non-highway, Coal Alliance was the only bidder. And they're set up in our system. The cards will match over and everything. We've talked to some other ones on that, but nobody else has ever came in with a bid on that.
I think your recommendations are solid and prudent fiscally, so I move that we accept your petroleum. Recommendations for the Coal Alliance county fuel quote. And your highway fuel bid for petroleum traders. And the flexibility, if necessary, with Coal Alliance. And. Your liquid asphalt flexibility with those according to need. Your hot mix, geographic considerations with milestone and Armix. And again, with your stone gravel between IMI and US Aggregates and your culvert pipe.
You want, you want to barret paving on the stone and gravel for the.
Yeah, yeah, with barret paving for the paving materials.
You've got a summary of it. Basically, the motion would be just to award as per the recommendations.
Is that okay with the recommendations? We don't need it in the minutes exactly who or what, okay.
Bobby's got a copy.
You got it, okay. As recommended, so move that we approve your recommendation.
We have a motion in a second to approve Mike's recommendations on. Pipe quotes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or the same side. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Lot of work in that.
All right, thank you. Okay, you want to introduce your guest? Which one? Steph Newt? Okay, well, I have two guests here. Okay. And Mr. Elsmeyer's here too, so I'm sure, well, the, the guest that's gonna speak, whoever's first. Beth. Mr. Elsmeyer's over there.
Oh, there he is. He was treated by Steve.
Hi, Beth.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming in.
No, thanks for.
You might want to introduce yourself from the camera.
Beth Newt with Main Street Richmond, the executive director, and thank you again for having me. So I asked to come in to discuss a little bit with you guys on what Main Street Richmond does, who we service, what we are. And to see if we can get some support from the county financially to continue to operate. As we see lots coming up in the next five years, we know there's, there's many projects coming through downtown Richmond. And we know that our businesses are gonna need as much support as possible. I'm looking through what I gave you. It just hit on our mission and our purpose. We work with the community, coordinating, collaborating with property owners, business owners, city government, the county as well. To develop downtown and the core of Richmond. Most people realize, especially over the last few decades, that having a strong core makes a strong community. So as we've seen growing out, we've seen the big box stores come in and that's kind of come back to where building that stronger core. Is really supporting the community more than the corridors with those stronger box stores. I also just went through, currently we have two professional staff, myself as the executive director. And then Andy Floyd as our director of programs and communication. So Andy handles most of the forward-facing events. You see a lot of the communication. He handles our Facebook page, stuff like that. And then I'm more on the backend helping with the financial side. A lot of our smaller business owners, that's a big weakness that we see is that they struggle with the financial piece. And I'm sure dealing with COVID grants and you probably saw that firsthand. And then I've also just given you a list of our board members for your information as well. So just some history on Main Street. Over the years, there's been a change, a lot of it with board and a lot of it with executive directors. So several years ago, it was very tech-focused and that was more of the interest of that current director. And then that kind of shifted to more development-focused. And we're getting to the point now where to continue to be in Main Street, we really have to meet the standards that Main Street America sets. So we're getting back to the actual Main Street focus that they've outlined for us. So Indiana Main Street started in nineteen eighty-five. We actually joined in nineteen eighty-seven, so we've been along, around for a long time. During that time, they, they've transitioned and changed. They're now under Okra through the state. And I've gotten, there's some tidbits down there of what those Main Street programs have been able to do. With number wise of expanded businesses, private and public development improvements. All of that's on there for your information. And then just a glance at kind of the setup currently of the Indiana Main Streets. Right now, there are seventeen in the state that are nationally accredited with Richmond being one of those. There are twenty Indiana accredited, so that means that they meet the standards of Indiana, but not national. Three aspiring to be accredited and then seventy-six that are downtown affiliates. Most of the time, a downtown affiliate does more of just events, so we see that in the smaller communities typically. Right now, the average Main Street organization receives just over fifty thousand dollars from their municipality. Or a community municipality, which is typically thirty-five to fifty percent of an operating budget. Currently, we are one of two that do not receive any funds, with the other one being Coatsville with a population of just over five hundred. So years, at least six years ago, was the last time that we received funding from the city. We are meeting with them again in January with the new transition to, also with Main Street America and Indiana Main Street, all of us together. To again, push the importance of supporting that downtown, Main Street and the core.
I just want to make sure, you said we're one of two and the other one's a population of five hundred?
Yeah.
Coatsville and Richmond are the only.
The only two. And that is out, this fifty thousand is outside of support for events as well. So some of the smaller ones also get, like with the eclipse coming up, we know that some of the local communities got a large chunk to help with the eclipse planning. So that fifty thousand is outside. That's an operating budget number. And I also threw in there a twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two year-end review from Indiana Main Street. Just let you know, there were two hundred and eighty new businesses opened on Indiana Main Streets. It records the volunteer hours, the, the number of volunteers, the building, the investment dollars. And this is all information that we track and have to submit annually to both Indiana Main Street and National Main Street. And then being part of Main Street America or the national program, we also have to meet their standards, which continue to get more stringent. They started as a grassroots with small towns, getting back to having that strong core. Realizing that that really is the push that's gonna make these communities stronger. The big box stores are not putting funds back in. When they get the funds, they're not supporting like the local businesses are. So we know if we support our local business, those funds will continue to grow locally. So within that national Main Street accreditation, we have to meet what they call the Main Street approach. So in that Main Street approach, they outline economic vitality, design, promotion and organization. And that all makes up what they call the transformation strategy. Those four points, economic vitality is being a catalyst for investment, entrepreneur ecosystem. Design, creating and inviting atmosphere, making it that place that everyone wants to be, the quality of place. Promotion, obviously, marketing, communicating, that's a great thing that when I brought Andy on, that he was able to pick up. He highlights our small businesses on our Facebook page and social media. Those get huge presence. And a lot of our small businesses are still struggling with that online presence, so that's a great opportunity for them to be seen. And then our organization, building our leadership and strong organizational capacity. That's been something we've been able to do with bringing myself on and then bringing up another employee. That's been something we've been able to do with bringing myself on and then bringing up another employee as well to continue those efforts. So in, let's see. In two thousand and two, we had Main Street America come in and complete a transformation strategy. So within that, we did community surveys, we had focus groups. So our businesses were coming down, our city employees came down, um, Beth Fields was there, the mayor was there, um, several of our businesses, I think. The chamber was there, there was a whole community group that came in and met with Main Street America and went over what they saw and the results they got back from our community surveys. So within that, they outlined, but all those four points, the organization, design, economic vitality and promotion. And then they were able to give us basically next steps. So this is the start to when we talk about a downtown plan. Even though that's not been officially completed, this is really the start to that focus.
What year was that again?
Uh, twenty-two. They started in July, we got the results, I think August was what I noted. So their future steps, um, they're seeing street skate plans, updates. And you'll notice looking through these, a lot of these align with those upcoming projects that we have. Wayfinding, obviously, that's been discussion with when the loop comes through, having that second phase. Strengthening our leadership, we actually received front, funds from Arlem to do some, um, board growth and planning, some strategic planning, so we're gonna have consultants come in with that and help us grow our organizational structure to align with these strategies. Funding, obviously, they wanna see partnership with our city and county, um, getting us off that list of two and encouraging the fact that we are beneficial. And then just continuing to align with Richmond Rising, space activation. And we do have a lot of exciting things that, um, that I've included, it might be a couple pages back. But in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, we've seen a lot of local investments. We all know that it's critical to keep these buildings owned locally. As soon as we get to an out-of-town investor, it typically sits, it's not maintained, um, and it's a struggle. So we've seen nine thirty-one purchased by Mike Wedall, which is gonna be the event center. Eight eighteen and eight twenty, Main Street Richmond purchased last year, and we now have Susie's Pizza operating in there, and when we moved our Main Street offices. Eight twenty-three, eight twenty-five, Ray and Sharon Onco have purchased. Um, nine thirty with BSN, the East, Demick Eastman's, seven sixteen with the Hillards, we now have Downtown Deli and Catering. And then they are also putting in a simulator upstairs. Tom Broyles has purchased seven thirteen East Main, and then Tom, um, and then his two counterparts Nicholas and Matthew have also purchased eight twenty-one. So all of, and that's outside of even when R and R did their purchases in twenty twenty-one. So we have a lot of local investment coming back, and that's really what is gonna help with that growth. And then just, just a review kind of, so you can get to know kind of what myself and Andy have done in the last couple of years. So I said, a lot of my focus is on the backend, on the business side. Prior to Main Street, I had a twenty-year history in finance, I was at Westin for twenty years, handling mostly the risk management. So that's kind of my, my forte anyway, so. Um, as of September of twenty twenty-one, I did receive my OKRA grant administrator certification. April of twenty-two, we regained our nationally accredited status, we had lost it under previous administration. Just November of this year, I received my Historic Real Estate Development Finance Professional Certification. And then, um, our Main Street America Revitalization Professional is pending the exam, once I take that. And at that point, I'll be the first one in Indiana under Main Street to receive that. So we are continuing our education to make sure we can continue to serve the community as much as possible. I've also spoken at a couple, couple different events for OKRA. With regards to the finance side, I did write and distribute the two hundred and fifty thousand COVID grant that was received by the city, um, that ran under us. And then we've done twenty thousand dollars to help with what we call the PALS program, so security and lighting downtown. We were able to get grants to cover that. Um, additional training, about twenty-five thousand, some operational grants at twenty thousand. And then our biggest is supporting, again, our businesses, so assisting them with receiving another twenty-five thousand and then another hundred thousand in local, in SBA loans that were in outcome of COVID. And those were very, very beneficial at a very low rate and a fixed term. So being able to continue to support them in that avenue, making sure that they have the sources, the resources that they need. Um, under Andy's position, you'll see he continues to launch our events and handle those with just trick-or-treat and the parade, we saw about fifteen hundred people each event downtown. So that's fifteen hundred people that are seeing what businesses are there, that are realizing that things are happening, and there's a lot of excitement around that. He also has brought in four sponsorships for events this year, almost eighteen thousand. And then almost fifteen thousand in-kind donations that we've also received that we've been able to turn around, so. And I just put, we're talking about social media presence and him doing the downtown on display. Just as a comparison, right now, we have forty-three hundred followers on Facebook, we get about two a day, um, we continue to grow after each event. And I think this number is backwards, but the chamber right now has fifty-four hundred. So just in comparison from a county-wide chamber to just our Main Street, we're continuing to grow and keep up with those numbers. I did include a recap of twenty-two and twenty-three, um, just to give you some information again on some of the events that took place that brought people down. And then the big thing I wanted to kind of hit on is what's upcoming and what that means for our businesses. So we know that phase two of the loop is coming up, supposed to start in the spring from last I heard. With the new Arlem grant, the Revitalize Richmond, the activation piece is gonna be running through Main Street. So we will be bringing on a third position, that'll be a business development individual, so they'll do a lot of what ISBBC does, but on a full-time basis. So instead of having to meet with somebody for an hour, get them to be able to schedule a time to come in, and then them go home and try to figure out everything, we'll have somebody on staff that can sit down with them, whether it be two hours or four hours, and actually walk them through that process of what they need to do as a business owner. If they need help with filings, if they need, um, assistance with, from a, an attorney. And then there will also be funds that will help with some of that. So if they need additional help paying for an attorney, there will be some additional funds to help with that stuff as well.
And is that a five-year commitment?
It is, mhm.
At, at what level?
They
You have dollar amount?
Are total for that piece, and then, um, we're also working with, um, retail strategies to do some recruitment, um, that's a value of eight hundred and sixteen thousand. Total, mhm. For eight fifteen, eight fifteen, eight sixteen. So that will be a five-year, with retail strategies, we'll be working with them to bring in and fill some of those vacant properties. And then we will also receive training, kind of a train-the-trainer type thing, so we can do that in the future ourselves with going out and trying to recruit. Instead of having to pay somebody else to come in and do it at that point. There is also the option of having them complete our downtown plan, if there is funding for that. Kind of taking what we have on that transformation strategy and then doing that next step. With that, we're also obviously gonna see apartments coming downtown, and we're gonna see all of the other investments, the quality of place, all the great things that are coming out of that Arlem grant. And then with additional, we have help funds, we have the ready funds, we have potentially the Elder Bearman project. So our businesses are really gonna need some handholding, to say the least. Whether it be them struggling with, you know, how do I keep up with the influx of people, how do I deal with the construction? And some of the small things that people don't realize that, that we do that maybe isn't and maybe as important that some people might see, but a great example is a circle-y, um, John serves as the commander for the Honor Guard. So every time he has a service, he has to close because he's the only one there. So when he has stuff going on or people picking up, he'll give us a call and one of us will go sit and hold down the, hold down the fort until he's able to get back. So something as simple as that, they know that they have somebody to call if they need help. Andy's been in Susie's every now and then when they, they've had people sick and they've been shorthanded. And they're doing amazing, I mean, it's a huge, if you've been down there and smelled it, oh my God. Needless to say, it's right by my office, I smell it all day, but just the little things, just them knowing that they have someone to call that will be there without, no questions asked, what do you need, what can we help with? So it's everything from helping with the financial piece to helping with, can you cover for me, can you bus tables? Just anything that they need that makes them able to feel better and comfortable. And sometimes it's just venting, I get that daily of what's this mean for me, what's going on? Can you explain this to me in a way that wasn't in the paper type thing? So that's a lot of what, what we do now and what we will continue to do during this next five-year period.
What is your service area because it goes beyond just?
It does, yeah, and that's a misconception as well. Our service area right now runs from E to E and then from the high school to sixteen. So basically, from the high school to AJ's Diner and then from E to E.
High school on the west side?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so that entire area. And we are not, we're completely, we're an independent nonprofit, we're not a membership organization. So everybody within that district gets the same support that the next person does. It doesn't, they don't have to pay us a fee, they don't pay a membership expense. They just call us or we get ahold of them and say, what can we do for you? So outside of our sponsorships and donations, that's, there is no additional membership funding or anything like that, so. And that's kind of why we are getting to the point where after so long, you can only, you can only keep going so long without that additional support. And we know that the businesses need that support.
And is that, is that by national or state design?
Yeah, 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 back in the, back in the day, I said, they've been through a ton of transitions, but there was membership fees. And that was one of the things when I came on, that we were still charging that we shouldn't have been. So we're, I mean, we're not set up as a chamber, we're a five oh one C three, so we're not supposed to be.
So you ask the people, you know, contributions?
And a lot of times, our main contributions come from the bigger organizations even outside of our district. So we know that our small business owners really can't afford to give us a ton of money for sponsorships. So like when we did our, when we do our five K, we do pumpkin signs with their name on it, they're twenty-five dollars, which is a pennies compared to what a typical marketing would be. And even with that, just this month, we were accepted as a new race in the Wayne County Challenge. So that'll bring our smaller race to a larger, much larger group, um, typically two fifty-plus runners we see at those events. I've been doing it for several years and been involved, and it's a great way, and it's people from everywhere, it's not just Wayne County. We've got people that come from Indy and Ohio, and it's just a great way to bring people into the county that have the same interest. So having things like that, being able to give them cheap marketing events is another way that we can help them get their name out and still recognize the fact that they don't have a ton of money to spend in that area.
I have long been curious about the damage that the construction and the closure at Ninth and Main. Be like having your heart stopped for a long time on the heels of COVID. Uh, since the opening of Main Street, even though it's been a short period of time, has, has you seen any recovery to the merchants on Main since Main Street has been opened? Uh, because I, I could imagine just how damaging that was for such an extremely long period of time.
There has definitely been more foot traffic. A mix of construction and COVID really hurt a lot of the individual, a lot of the businesses where you would walk in and pick something up, now individuals are like, I can just get it online, they really got used to the ordering online. So again, trying to re-educate the community that our businesses are still there, they still wanna support you, and in many cases, they're quicker and they're more efficient. A lot of times, um, going back, as John is an example, people will order shirts online. And we had that with the Wayne County Challenge, we had an individual who ordered shirts, and they're like, we have to order a month in advance. And I've used him in mine for the past, and it's a week before when I cut off pre-registration, and I can say, here's my order and make sure I have exactly what I need. So just re-educating them, but yes, it has helped, there's definitely more foot traffic. Obviously, we've seen two restaurants open, we've seen lots of buildings being worked on and purchased, so I continue to be positive that that will grow, um, and continue to, to have more traffic. There actually is a lot of traffic that drives through downtown. City, now that our offices are right there, we see it quite a bit, so. That's another piece, um, one of the areas that we would love to work with the city on is getting some things changed, or we can have the perpendicular signage on the buildings when you drive through downtown, being able to actually see those signs and the buildings that are there, right now, they have to be flush, and it's really difficult to see what's there until you're on top of it.
Funny you mention it, because I, just this morning, saw somebody put something on Facebook of a picture in like nineteen fifty-five of Christmas. And all the cars lined up and they all had the, the vertical sign, every bill, I mean, you could see. And it was, it was actually quite impressive, I, I know we're in a different time than we are in nineteen fifties, but
That picture does show how wide the street actually is.
That have had successful downtowns, they've kind of brought that feel back to them of the nineteen fifties. When you go to visit Carmel and Fortville, Fortville's a great one.
It is, yeah, we've visited there for some Main Street events.
And I can personally attest to the fact that Main Street was elbow-to-elbow foot traffic in the nineteen fifties, prison zone.
Yeah, that is, that is one of my favorite pictures, it's hanging up in my office, so. And then I said I've included some additional information that you guys can, to look at when you have a chance. As I put in here, our biggest achievement is our district appreciation. There's some quotes in here from our business owners, some of them who, when I came, one particular, when I came on, staff was told, he doesn't like anyone, he's always grumpy. And that's, that's really not the case, he was frustrated and he really had no one to talk to, and he didn't know how to express that. So we have overcome that, I still hear a lot of complaints, but he's appreciative, and that's important to me. Knowing that I'm making that difference and that we're able to support them is, is huge.
Have you said you were, you've already had a meeting set up with the mayor-elect and you've got any kind of verbal commitment from him?
We're still trying to schedule, actually, yeah, so we're trying to get that scheduled. And we, in discussion with him, he's been very positive of what Main Street's doing, he's been very positive of the program. But I do not have, I can't say I have a verbal at this point. And then I also included, um, some information which did not print in my packet. I know there had been some questions about sprinkler systems and some information on that. I did include in there kind of a, a tidbit of what expenses you could be looking at for that project. Um, we've not had somebody come in and do a quote at this point. But even just, let's see, um, general range between four fifty and eight hundred, or four fifty and six hundred dollars per foot of pipe needed for that main line. So it would be a pretty costly endeavor. And that's just to run the main line, and then you'll see at the bottom of that, it actually outlines to retrofit the properties once inside the building.
Can you back up for one second, though, what's, why do we need the, explain why we need the sprinkler system?
Sorry, I get ahead of myself, I just assume everybody's thinking like I'm thinking. And that's, we have a lot of buildings downtown that either previously had apartments or have the capacity to have apartments. Um, with those, if they have the capacity but didn't previously have an apartment, a sprinkler system would be required. So to be able to get those properties done, the property owner is going to have to invest a very large sum that will not be returned at any point because it's so costly. To get that up to code, to be able to have that sprinkler system. I would love to see funding to run the main line of that system, to where it butts up to the buildings. And then we just leave the responsibility with the building owner to run inside the property. So it's already there, it's ready to go, and that's just one more piece that is easier for them to pick up the expense on because they're only having to cover what's inside.
Now, do you know if the Arlem grant has addressed this? Because in their plan, the Nolimbergs and the Hill building, they want apartments up there, were, were there existing apartments? Were, were there existing apartments before, are they grandfathered in or is that something?
No, they were non-existing, so those, that will be required if they put in.
Does it require two lines, you run on inside of the street, parallel system?
Um, let's see.
Kind of like a golf course, figuring out how you're gonna get your water if you're rough.
Right.
I would imagine that better would.
I believe it will be, um, yeah, one on each side, I mean, there has to be a curbside valve and everything as well, um, so they can gain access. But the, I mean, the estimate is, yeah, they would have to, which is, sorry, thinking faster than I'm talking, but, which was one question that has come up and that we've talked about. Is there a way to work this in while we're already digging up the ground for another project? I mean, obviously for phase two of the loop, all of that Main Street's coming up, if those could be put in at the same time, that's less of.
That would make the most sense, sir.
Well, yeah, definitely.
Government we're talking about.
Well.
Let's pave a road and then put manholes in after we've paved it. We've seen it time and year.
Is there anything else that I? Do you have any questions for me after all of that information, it was probably a lot more than.
What are you seeking, what do you hope, um, the county can do to help you meet your mission?
I would love to see financial support for operating expenses at a level that you would feel comfortable with. Um, whether that be a one-time or whether that be a continuing annual. Being that economic development is a huge piece of what we're doing and what we're trying to support. I think it would be justified and as the county seat, we have the professional staff, it's not a whole, it's not a volunteer organization.
So what is your operating budget?
Right now, no projects, just general operating with, um, salaries and taking care of our two buildings, about two hundred thousand a year. So it's not a huge budget, um, we try to stay very, we try not to overspend, obviously, we, we do have two properties that we have to maintain, which was important to us to show as we're trying to get people to come in and buy properties. It's hard for me to say, you should be downtown, but we won't invest in downtown. So that was when we bought the Ten Lizzie building, that was important to us because we didn't want to see, and I, I mean, I, Ron and Rachel wanted it to stay local too. But you know, when it comes down to it, you take what you can get type thing. So it was important for us to see that space continue and before Suzie's came in, we did put a large investment into that building redoing. I don't know if you guys have been in there since to compare what Ten Lizzie was to what Suzie's is now, but it's quite a difference and it's, you've put a lot in to, to try to help with that.
One of, one of our issues, obviously, besides, besides having conversations with the city. Think I would, I would certainly want it to be a partnership.
Okay.
For doing something, but there are also currently three other Main Streets and one that I believe is, is in the process of applying. So potentially four additional Main Streets in Wayne County. None of which have staff.
Yeah.
So that we have to factor in how we support the other Main Streets. Or there's the Main Street or, you know, for that matter, how could you support the other Main Streets? Part of that process, so I think certainly there's some further investigation. Is there a particular group that is driving the request for sprinkler system? Is that people that you work with on a regular basis?
Um, right now, I, I've talked to lots of people, um, Jerry Purcell is on our board and obviously a new city council, um, that's something that's very important to him and we've had discussions about that in that capacity. I tried to get ahold of him yesterday to get some more information to see if any more had been done from his side, uh, where that was at and I wasn't able to, to reach him, but.
So I would think if that's something that's, that's important to property owners, that there needs to be some.
Absolutely.
Planning and getting some bids and.
Yeah.
I've spoken to a couple owners downtown, one of them you know very well, but he would love to put apartments in, but his sprinkler system is just like.
It's cost prohibitive.
And you know, one of the questions is, do you put it in everywhere, which would be enormously expensive? And then some people may not be able to use it because it's still a significant expense. Or do you put it in piece-me, I don't know enough about that process to know what, what would make sense. There would need to be a plan that can be part of your overall Main Street plan and find out what that, that costs.
And that, and that is a concern that I've had, we, we're gonna have a lot of money going in down there if we don't have a comprehensive plan for all the businesses downtown. We, we just got, I mean, that's why I thought it was important for Beth to come in and explain, especially it's kind of funny, it happens to be today. Being voted on this afternoon, kind of goes hand in hand.
Anything else that you want to make sure we're aware of? Appreciate you coming.
I appreciate you having me, if there's anything else that I can provide or anything, let me know, I'd be more than happy to send it over. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Best of good fortune.
We'll continue the conversation, so, uh, next up, Roxy, you ready? I think everybody knows Roxy Dear, hi Roxy.
Who doesn't know Roxy Dear, everybody knows.
Well, I'm here today not on an official Richmond neighborhood restoration, I'm here to talk to you about another project. Um, I am very passionate about our downtown. Um, I think Beth and the work that we're doing with Richmond Road Restoration, um, it's definitely become something that I get excited about. Um, a project that is not related to R and R or to the Main Street organization is, I was, was driving down Main Street the other day and I noticed the Downtown Explosion Memorial. And it has just been, it's been there, it's just kind of stagnant. Um, and I, this is a project that is personal to me, my mom's sister, um, was one of the victims of the explosion. And I was sitting at a table about a year ago with twenty young professionals, all under the age of forty and only two people, myself included, hadn't knew anything about the explosion. So my wheels started turning, we need to do some education, we need to teach people about the history of Wayne County and Richmond. And if you'd asked me a decade ago, I would have said, let's not talk about it because it's just sad and it kind of played into what was happening downtown. Now we're seeing a lot of movement in our downtown, Main Street, they're doing great work and I want to keep a piece of history. So I started thinking about how do we bring back the memorial site, update it, make people understand the history. And, um, I spoke to Brad and I said, I would like to clean it up, I would like to maybe add a few pieces to it. Um, light it so that you can see it, you drive by it now, you can't even read the quote that's on the memorial site. Um, so I've started talking to some creative people in the community, I've received a few quotes for some work to be done to that and so I was just gonna talk through that today very briefly and give you a kind of an idea of what I'm thinking. Um, so right now, the, uh, memorial stands about eight feet tall, maybe ten. Um, it's a brick curved arch, uh, the brick has not been cleaned, um, probably since it was up. Put in, I think it went in right as the downtown street was built, um, as we put the road through instead of the promenade. There are metal letters that make a quote on there, many of the letters are just right at the verge of falling off. Actually, I went in, installed some of them back in, a few have fallen off and they've been replaced with different colored letters. So now we have a mismatch of letters and colors and I have pictures, I'll email these to you, so you can see it. Um, but I reached out to Reeves Manufacturing, um, they were actually really excited to look at this and think about this project. Um, for them to redo the letters would be about, um, forty-six hundred dollars. Um, and they would install those letters for us. I then called Andy Frame at Frame's Lawn Care and I said, can you come down and look at this with me? And he said, I have no idea where you're, what you're talking about. And he pulled into the parking lot and he still couldn't figure out where to go. And he drives by it every single day, I think we all do, but we don't notice it. And, um, Andy actually came up with a really creative plan, he's, he got really motivated about this. He would like to add a boulder, um, you'll notice in the pictures that I'll send you, there's a wreath now that I believe staff change out, county staff change out every season. Um, on the boulder, he would like to put a plaque with the forty-one names of the victims lost and, um, clean it up with some, uh, seasonal shrubbery and things that would just enhance the corner a lot a little bit. Um, we're going, I'm going to speak to Tony Foster at RPNL, ask if they can add in, um, some solar panel lights, that way, you know, we're not having to worry about running electricity to the corner, things like that. And along with a masonry, um, company in town to clean up the brick and make sure that it's well-maintained. Um, I have spoken to the Urban Enterprise Association, they would like to come alongside and provide some funding for the landscaping and then the Dear Family Foundation will also work with the group to maintain the location site moving forward. Um, so in the next couple of weeks, we'll receive like the final quotes and I would like to come to you and ask for your support in this project.
Sure, and from what I understand, Steve, I spoke to you, memorials on our property, is that correct? And we maintain it currently, well, our lack of maintaining it now, like she said, you know, as generations have changed since this was first put up, I think it's been long forgotten, who's supposed to do what, because originally it never was downtown and I assumed the town took care of it.
It moved and one of them.
Then it got moved when the hill traveled to the promenade and I think as I recall initially, the Parks Department was supposed to maintain it, but it's, you know, people change and so then the county kind of got positions to take care of it and as she said, uh, it takes a little bit of budget to maintain it and it's not gonna happen. And I think it's important that it is a history of our Main Street in Richmond. If we're gonna have a memorial, then we should take care of it.
I disagree at all, it's one of those things that, that as you go past it, you know, so many times, it, it just kind of blends into the scenery.
Particularly timely because that explosion was a catalyst to get ultimately led to the construction of Elder Pierman on a lease, on a lease basis. As we're seeing that building, that site being, uh, being, uh, we invented, yes, and I think this is really timely.
And I think it ties into everything that we're talking about.
Downtown, there's a lot of money downtown.
Yeah. And I think that this is something that is, I mean, you go to the museum right now and they've got a display, um, and it's getting a lot of traffic and young generations are starting to hear the story of our downtown and we want to make sure that they, they understand that Richmond and our Wayne County is a community that has grit and tenacity and can get through really tough things and we come back stronger and I think that's, this can be part of that story.
Thank you so much, Roxy, poor. Your heartfelt determination to memorialize this in a worthy manner.
Well, thank you.
You've obviously given this a lot of time, strangely enough, just a couple of weeks ago, I was walking by it and I stopped. And I stopped and read it and, you know, gave it some, some emotional time and I thought, you know, this could be better. So it was just a couple of weeks ago, I had no idea that you had really embraced this in such a meaningful way, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Let's continue the dialogue.
Yes, thank you.
Is Mr. Elsmeyer your guest or something?
He's always my guest, but I don't, I think he's.
Just wanted to make sure I wouldn't leave him.
I don't know if he was bringing my Christmas gift.
That probably, very, very likely. Or Tucker's.
Yeah, Tucker's.
Okay, let's, uh, move back to claims.
Okay. Not a lot today. I move for the approval of a small, of a Verizon claim dated December eighteenth and regular claims dated December twentieth.
That's it?
That's it.
We have a motion and a second to approve those claims and any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries.
I also move for approval of Commissioner meeting minutes of December thirteenth.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December thirteenth and any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Now, the, uh, Tourism Bureau is, is recommending that we reappoint the following three people to a one-year term on the board, Beth Leisure, representing the County Chamber of Commerce, Patricia Porzekowski, who represents the lodging industry, the owner of Dear Ridge Camping Resort, and myself as representative of the Wayne County Commissioners.
Move that we reappoint all three?
We have a motion and a second to reappoint those three members of the tourism board. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Anything else for this morning's session, uh, Ron stepped out, so.
Yeah, he, I was just gonna mention, I got an email just back from Max on the signage. And he basically saying he needs to get the agreement done, he has some questions and he's gonna get with us tonight.
Okay.
On, on the signage.
Main Street, where are you from?
Forward the, uh, the gazebo.
Yeah.
Oh, Max, okay, I, I was back remembering the days of yore when Christmas shopping was a fantastic experience on Main Street. It was, uh, quite a, quite a time.
We want to discuss this at all or?
Yeah, I need updates from Help.
Let's, uh, let's discuss it, go ahead.
Just, I, I don't want to dive too deep into it because, um, they haven't made a decision yet, but I have a meeting with them Monday with the board of Help Shelter and they were very receptive to to becoming our facility or our county officer to take animals and I got an email back from her this morning. Said they've given the board to place their opinion by till Friday and then they're gonna take another advisement and they said, basically said everything was, majority of it was positive and.
So we would still need some time if we, uh, make that decision to walk out of contract.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to do a contract.
Should we think in terms of a month-to-month, uh, extension of what we're doing in the welfare league until we, I mean, let them know that we're considering other options. When does, have we been funding them up until today, I mean?
Uh, it's, it's a, it's an annual.
And you're a donation to a nonprofit, much like the county museum.
Um, I'm okay with that, I mean, it sounds like we could probably have this in place in January, depending on how quickly we can get Ron to get on a contract and agreements.
Then Walter?
No, with, uh, Help.
Help, help the animals.
My big question that I hope you've asked them is what has changed that would allow them to accommodate the county's needs that did not allow them to accommodate the city's needs for?
Because of their relationship with the city.
Personalities, not the animals.
It's just how they were treated from what I, from the city and, and the pure volume that the city of Richmond gave them on the animals. It was overwhelming to them and they had no interest of taking on any other contract with anybody and it had a bad taste in their mouth, basically.
Now, did you address the no kill, I, because in the past.
Oh, yeah, and, and they were perfectly fine and they, they understand one hundred percent that a no-kill shelter does not mean you don't humanely euthanize animals.
Oh, right, I mean, that's the definition of no kill, you have to euthanize an animal that's suffering or vicious.
We discussed that at length and they were well, um, versed with what that means and had no issue with if a dog is aggressive or cannot be adopted or has serious medical issues, that you humanely euthanize it.
Well, that, that still is within the confines of having the no-kill status, but would they, would they kill for space?
No.
I, I didn't think they would.
And we're not asking them to do that unless, you know, they're, we, we discuss a per-dog contract, per-animal contract, not a donation of sorts, you know, lump sum. But based on their capacity now and how they adopt and they felt very comfortable that they had the numbers where our county officer, how much. they had the numbers where our county officer, how much they, how many animals she brings in historically over the last three years, and they felt comfortable with that.
Oh, well, that, that is not a fair.
And they know that, but they also have a really good relationship with our animal control officer, and they know her efforts above and beyond of just picking up stray animals and bringing them to, to the shelter. Our volume is so much less than the city's.
True, but not always, I mean, the last three years have really been extremely low on county volume. I, I think, you know, because it is known that there's no space at AWL for animals the last three years. So people out in the county know not to even call Jessie. I mean, there's a lot of.
I don't wanna speak for our officer. I, I.
Well, I, I mean, I, the animal advocates out in the county know that if you call Jessie, that there's no place for her to take county animals.
But that's a situation if we have.
What's your point with making that comment? How does that relate to?
That I think maybe Help has a, maybe forecasting a volume that is low.
So, or we bring that up with them.
Yeah, or we continue to have the same efforts that we are now, and not, you know, if, 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 and Jessie and, and I have talked, if an animal is running free and it's not causing a disturbance, and it's healthy, and not vicious, there's no reason to pick it up, unless it's, uh, somebody's dog, and she tries to find, she does all the efforts she can to find it, but it's an owner's dog running around. Um, only when the dog becomes a nuisance is when she has to pick it up, or it's been hurt or injured.
Well, a dog running around in traffic is a hazard, I mean, it can cause, you know, injury.
I, I agree with that, but I think it's, it's her, I mean, if a dog is running around in Dalton, the chances of it getting hit are a lot less than it would be running around in Richmond. So, it's like the feral cats, I mean, you're not gonna pick up every cat in the county and take it to a shelter.
But did you talk about cats as well as dogs with Help?
Um, we did, and, I mean, our animal control officer hasn't brought any cat in five years.
Cats are very difficult to catch.
Well, but they're abandoned. Uh, in prior to that, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure there aren't cats that don't need to be sheltered, because often there are whole litters of kittens that have been brought to Animal Welfare League from the county in the past, I know that. Um, you know, whole litters of kittens are an issue, uh, what kind of a, uh, this is on a per capita? I mean, what kind of terms are you talking about, um?
Well, like I said, I don't wanna get into the weeds until we discuss further with, with them, see if they're even, I mean, we've gotta get them on board, whether they even wanna do it, then we can get down.
Well, I need to know what board you're talking about, I mean, well, I know, but, I mean, before you can make an offer, I think the commissioners need to know what kind of offer you're making.
He's not making an offer, he's asking them what they can do.
Yeah, I've asked them, what is your cost to take on? They, they're gonna get back with me the number per dog.
Okay, I mean, because we've never talked about having a per capita, uh, agreement.
But we know what we pay now, kind of our basis, what we're basing it on.
And I think that's what the, the city of Richmond does. Newcastle, we just have a, uh, X number per animal that they take there.
Well, but, I mean, but before we agree to that.
We haven't agreed.
So they're, they're getting back to you of what is per capita?
He cannot agree, it takes two commissioners to make an agreement, he's merely talking to you.
But, I mean, uh, but I, but the commissioners need to agree that we would entertain a per capita for dogs and cats, I mean, we, we really need to have them take cats as well as dogs.
We'd entertain a per capita, absolutely.
Okay, well.
Depending on what it is, and, and what they can do.
But it also has to be cats, because, just because we have it, but the thing is, there have been such a low number in the past, we cannot base our forecast on the last few years because of.
I under, I understand, you're repeating what you already said to me, I heard you the first time, I understand that.
And, and.
And we discussed cats, and I, I can't remember in detail what they said, but it came up with that, that is not an issue, I do know that. They did have concerns of taking in colonies of, or, or coming in, the county going in and, and seizing a dog kennel that breeders, and I said, well, there's always that chance of doing that, but there's no, we haven't done it in the past recently, but I can't guarantee that, I can't, I don't have a magic ball and say we're, you know, how many animals we're gonna.
And dog fighting.
And they understand that.
I mean, dog fighting is an issue, and, you know, the law enforcement.
But I know we can't do nothing.
Right, right, absolutely.
Okay, I don't wanna scare off somebody.
Continue that conversation, and, uh, we'll, we'll start the planning process.
Ultimately, we need to meet these, you know, we need to talk to them.
Ultimately.
Right, before. So I think because this is our last meeting of the year, I move that we continue our, um, service from Animal Welfare League on a month-to-month basis, pro-rated at fifty thousand dollars a year.
Their request is, is four thousand dollars a month.
Oh, four thousand a month, oh, that's, yeah, okay.
And I would, I think that would be fine. We need to have something available, but we don't know whether they'll be.
But I don't understand why we're even saying that we're gonna give them four thousand dollars a month, when we know that, what are we giving them four thousand dollars for?
That's a good point.
Well, they, they have.
We've got a contract.
They have to take animals as.
We're not, uh, do we know they have any space?
And they're not.
Yes, they do.
They're not willing to, uh, to take all the animals that are brought to them, it's animals that are brought to them if they have space, so.
I, I'm not opposed to doing, continuing, uh, we need to clarify whether.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's been structured as basically a donation.
Right.
As you've done, just, you know, except for the, for the museum.
We should've had a contract from day one.
Yeah.
Well, day one, but I think before now.
Okay, so we'll continue with that, uh, discussion on a, on a month-to-month basis. And, you know, we may end up with, uh, with them, yeah, we have.
We have made some negotiations.
Because their position on no-kill is the very same as Help. They absolutely will euthanize if an animal is suffering or vicious, and so.
I don't think that's the case.
Well, yes, they do.
That's not what they said they were in there in, in July.
No, the definition of no-kill is that you do euthanize.
They understand the definition of it, but that's not what they do.
I'm talking about the global definition of no-kill.
And I'm talking about Animal Welfare League's definition, because they said they would not do that.
They will not euthanize, it's not euthanasia if it's for space, that's just killing for space. Euthanasia is when the animal is suffering.
You, you have your interpretation of what they said, and I have mine, so we'll continue the discussion. Um, and is there anything else for this morning?
Do we, I have a motion on the floor to continue on a month-to-month basis.
Maybe, yeah. I will say that, and I hope you mean assuming that we work out.
If they accept animals as.
And if we work out a contract that, that our, our attorney believes makes sense.
A month-to-month contract?
A month-to-month contract.
You wanna characterize it as donation, or would you rather do? I would rather not.
We continue it, you know, for a year, I, I want it, I want us to spell out.
A year, a month, and I, I've got a document that they, somebody in their organization prepared.
I'm saying month-to-month, at least initially, until we see whether we have options. If we have no options, then we may need to, to continue with them.
Let's assume the worst, that we don't have an alternative.
Right.
And that they will accept animals. And if they will not accept animals, we will not pay them their monthly stipend.
Well, and again, that's why I think it should be on a, on a per-animal basis instead of a monthly stipend. That's what they're suggesting is a monthly contribution.
Yeah, they're saying four thousand dollars costs long.
Right, if they accept zero, if they accept a hundred, so, well. They're not gonna accept a hundred.
Agreements in the past, such as they were, did not have any criteria for their performance.
So, I think going forward.
Yeah, why should we pay four thousand dollars a month for the same X number of dogs and cats to be cared for?
Well, and, and it's my way of thinking, once they accept those animals, they're, those are their animals.
And Help was, it was very clear to them, and they agreed that if they take the dog, they are to do what they wish.
And it, correct, there's a, there's a, there's a waiting period, um, and, and that's longer if, if there, if there's some kind of, uh, legal action. Uh, so, we need to incorporate all of that, so if that's your motion, and that's your second,
Okay.
I would support that, and so let's call it, all in favor?
Can we clarify this motion again, because it got muddled up there a little bit?
We'll work out the contract, go ahead.
Again, I move that we, um, continue on a month-to-month basis with Animal Welfare, uh, League providing animal shelter, um, under an agreement that will follow a contract to be developed by our county attorney that specifies they will accept animals from the county under that agreement.
And, anyway, on a per-dog basis.
Per-animal basis.
Um.
How are we doing? Well, no, we're gonna put on that. Don't look at me. I got, I got room for a couple, but I, I keep along.
Um, boy, I, that's new ground for me, I have.
I, I, if you add the per-dog, I will second that one, without that, I won't. I'm not, I don't feel free to give any four thousand dollars.
Could we make it per-animal?
Per-animal, oh, yes, per-animal.
How many dogs do we typically pick up a year?
Yeah. I'd have to look at the numbers, I can't even remember off the top of my head, but.
They will be able to stay in business if it's like fifty dollars an animal?
It seems like it's like twelve, on average, I think.
A year?
Yeah, are you saying that's a one-time, if they pick up?
Twelve into four thousand, that's a year per dog or per animal.
Are you saying a one-time per animal?
Yes.
So.
Not a monthly fee for every animal that they're holding.
They will not accept that?
Three hundred and thirty-five dollars per animal. Three hundred and thirty-five dollars per animal, four thousand divided by twelve.
Now, if they pick up a, if Jessie brings in a shih-tzu, and we give them three hundred and thirty-five dollars, they'll drop that shih-tzu in one day. You know?
Good, so much the better, then they can take another dog the next day. So.
That, a one-time, they won't accept that.
That kind of gives us, well, we'll find out.
Well, I, I, I guess I'm more concerned in figuring out what week they said, and put it that in mind, to let them react to it, if they accept, they accept, they don't, you know?
I say two hundred dollars per animal.
Negotiate that.
That would be a blank.
Yeah, that's, I, I just don't know.
Okay, we'll have that conversation, so, did you?
I'll accept that amendment, yeah.
And you seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pledge the same sign, motion carries, and we will reconvene at one thirty. Welcome back for the afternoon session. We have one agenda item for the afternoon, and I know that Kim, uh, would like to talk to us after that, uh, briefly about resources issue, so, obviously, we're not. So, uh, a couple of weeks ago, the workshop, the, uh, our, I think, the first meeting of the county council, Valerie Schaefer and Ron Oler, were here to talk about the Loop Six-O-One project. Uh, the, the council voted to support that project after a recommendation from the Economic Development Board that, uh, that that be supported. The Loop Six-O-One project, I still can't wrap my head around that name, but what we've referred to for several years as the Elder Berman Project, which has gone through many, many different iterations and ideas, uh, over the last, again, several years, uh, has, has come to kind of a turning point that, uh, we're ready to move forward, um, and make a decision, one way or the other, how we're gonna support this project, if we're gonna support this project. Uh, so, this is, uh, an opportunity for commissioners to ask any questions, uh, of Valerie, of ours. The mayor-elect is also here to answer questions. Very little. See what the commissioner's pleasure is, we approved the recommendation from the EDC Board, or Ellen. Valerie, you wanna give us a brief rundown about what that recommendation is, how we got to this point?
Yes, so, as part of the overall contribution, the city's contribution to the project, um, the city of Richmond has requested support from the Consolidated Edit Fund, uh, in the amount of two million dollars to help support the project and, and get this over the finish line. Um, we have the approval from the Richmond Redevelopment Commission for the city's contributions into the project. Um, as Jeff said, the two million dollars has been recommended for approval by the EDC Board, and has been approved by Wayne County Council as well, and so, in my mind, this is the last meeting needed to approve the financial commitments needed to move the project forward that would allow us to start the formal approval process with the city contributions, um, which includes a three-point-four-five million dollar cash contribution and a two-point-four-five million dollar tip bond. That is project-based, backed by the developer, and, and guaranteed to cover any shortfall.
And one of the questions, Val, that, that has come up is whether there are guarantees, uh, clawbacks for these, these edit dollars in particular, which is our, our concern.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, it's a city project, but, uh, it's a collaborative approach to a, a city project. Um, and so, there's, there's been discussion about a development agreement, a bonding agreement.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure where, which of those documents, uh, with those kind of guarantees we found.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, and, and are those likely to, uh, to come to fruition?
So, right now, we are negotiating the final terms of the development agreement or project agreement, whatever you wanna call it. Within that agreement, there are guarantees that the developer is making for the project to remain market rate, there are guarantees for a period of years that the developer has to own the project. Um, there are commitments by the city to tear down the building, to provide a certain number of parking spaces in the garage, and to make the site pad-ready at closing to deliver the site to the developer. However, the protections for the financial contributions will really be in the loan agreement, and that is the next phase of agreements that will be drafted, uh, between the developer and the city of Richmond, and that's where the clawbacks will be incorporated, um, that will protect both the county's contribution into the project as well as the city's contribution. So, in that loan agreement, the county's money would be considered, and it would be structured as a forgivable loan to the developer. Therefore, if they don't perform, and the project, uh, does not completed, is not completed to the terms outlined in the project or development agreement, then we would be able to clawback that money. And I shared with Wayne County Council, when we have drafted that loan agreement, um, we will work with cities. we will work with city's law department as well as their outside counsel to provide Ron with a copy of that for review and input on what those clawbacks look like.
So, we will have input on that?
Yes, it's not my decision as to how much input and what the city actually incorporates. Yeah, that would be Ron.
Ron, will you give us a commitment today of allowing us to have input on that?
We'll protect the money.
So, what I'm asking?
Do you want the commissioners to have input, or do you want your attorney to have input?
I want the commissioners to have input.
Is that normal? I don't know.
I think this is a very unique project, I don't know that we've crossed this bridge.
I'm not sure that's normal to.
The mayor-elect is having a normal request. My attorney's not in the room, but he wants his partners to see her, that's a normal request.
It's a very unique project, I think the more input, the better. Let's see, county's contributions, from county edit?
County edit, yeah.
No, consolidated.
Consolidated edit.
County?
Consolidated edit. So, we are, we are making a determination on whether to allow the recommendation from the EDC Board on expenditure of consolidated edits.
Yeah, I got it. Which is about six percent of the unit of the county. By the city.
By the city, correct.
By the city.
I have a problem with all the attorneys, though. I'm not gonna obligate myself to do something my attorney would recommend otherwise. But that's normal, and that's fine, it's fine.
Who are you working with outside, outside counsel?
Lisa Lee, I know her. Yeah, and she's doing the project agreement as well, so she'll also draft the loan agreement.
Most of my questions regarding this development were addressed at the workshop in November, and I thought that it was a very comprehensive presentation, I appreciated that. It addressed many questions. One of them was the market rate price for, uh, the tenants, and I felt that those prices that were cited were quite reasonable. I'm wondering if the developer, or in the research, had, um, identified what the monthly, uh, rates would be without the, um, uh, public support in this project. Because I'm guessing they would be out of reach.
They wouldn't be a project, no, you know?
I, I know, I've heard that, but.
Right, they, they would not make a return in this market without the public contribution and without charging much higher rental rates.
Out of reach of what this market would bear.
Yes, and, and I did wanna address the, the rental rates. I know I've had some conversation from, with Brad and other individuals that felt like the rents were too high for this market. And when we talk about a range from, uh, a thousand dollars to eighteen fifty, the units that are gonna be eighteen fifty a month, there's only eight of them. Those are the two-bed, two-bath, and a den. So, we're talking about the majority of the units, a hundred and thirty-four of them, will be anywhere between eleven seventy-five and sixteen hundred a month. So, that's where the bulk of the rental rates will be. And, uh, Mayor-elect Oler and I were just in a meeting yesterday with another housing developer that's looking at a different area of town, and it will be a combination of single-family and multifamily development. And the multifamily developer that they're looking at, they specifically stated that their rental rates would be between eleven hundred and sixteen hundred a month. So, that's, that's really closely aligned with what Clarity and Collins is proposing. And so, I think that, that is the going rate for these types of units in this market today.
Well, I feel they're very reasonable. And another question I have is that my family's engaged in support of a similar project in Indianapolis. There are a lot of NIMBYs in this particular neighborhood that, uh, my family is, um, on the opposite side of because they feel it's a very much-needed project with public-private partnership that's going to make it happen. And one of the, uh, agreements in that project is a certain percentage of affordable housing in that much larger development. Uh, was there any discussion in this to having a certain, however, small percentage of affordable units being set aside, uh, for affordable housing?
That was not part of that, of this discussion, and that wasn't the intent of the redevelopment of this specific site. However, the EDC is involved in some affordable housing projects right now with three different developers who are looking at different sites. So, we are working on that, um, spectrum of the housing market as well, and so that will be addressed in a different development.
Okay, just so that that topic is being addressed, I think it's one that needs to be raised as we're looking at this market rate commitment of, uh, edit dollars. So, it, it is being addressed, I just think we'd be remiss in not considering that aspect because there is very much a need for market rate, but also affordable housing at this time. So, with those two, uh, topics being addressed, I, um, feel that, um, all of my questions have been addressed.
Well, I'd like to address the, the market rent, you know, you've heard me talk about this. I did my own research on this. So, a hundred and, a hundred and sixty-three units, which is thirty-seven buildings of ten units, have a average market rent of four hundred and nine dollars, that is Richmond.
That is from CoStar, and CoStar does not represent this market, it says so on their website.
It's from this market, the data is pulled from this market, that's what we all use in appraisals to.
And, and those are probably for buildings that were built in nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy.
I agree, but, but that is the market. So, I'm, my question is, how do you leap from four hundred and three dollars to eleven hundred in this market?
So, the units that were just built at Chester Heights, ninety-six new units, um, one-bed, one-bath are being rented for seven fifty a month. Uh, two-bed, I think it's one bath, maybe two baths, eight fifty a month. Um, those are much smaller square footages with no onsite amenities, like the resort-style apartment co- complex that we're talking about, Elder Bearman. Ivy Green, I'm told, is between nine hundred and a thousand dollars a month. Again, that's a very old apartment complex, so I do see the, the value in the rental rates of a brand-new resort-style living amenity.
I, I don't disagree with that. The scope of it is where it's very concerning, and it's up to the developer what renting wants to charge, but it's not market rent. If you wanna be above market rent, which a thousand to eighteen hundred is above market rent for Wayne County.
But don't you agree we don't have this style of market? There is no market for these types of units.
But if I build, look, give me, I'll give you an example. If I build a house in Wayne County and it cost me two million dollars to build, that is not a two-million-dollar market-value house.
Right.
Because there's nothing to compare it with. It doesn't make it a two-million-dollar market-value house, it only costs that.
I understand, because this.
Apples to apples.
Right, this development will cost thirty-seven million dollars to build, and it will be assessed for seventeen, so I, I understand that logic.
So, I, I mean, like I said, and I don't have a problem with the, the developer. If a developer wants to come into Wayne County and spend his own money to try to get market rents like that, and doesn't, he'll have to adjust for that. The problem is, it's taxpayers' money to help subsidize, and if you get to even those rents, which is a, on the high end of the rents for Wayne County.
Yeah.
At a hundred and fifty units is, is a big project.
Well, the ninety-six units at Chester Heights were leased within three months, and they have a very long waitlist. We have a one percent vacancy rate for market-rate apartments in the community, and the housing study says we can absorb nearly three hundred per year for the next five years.
I have my issues with this study. I've researched it, and speaking of the study, I mean, how many people, it's a draft, it's not a final version, and we're asked to make a decision on a market study that most people haven't read.
But this development is based on the market study from twenty-twenty-one, when we started this project, that said, we, we, at, back then, we had a vacancy rate of one percent, and that housing study recommended that we pursue first market-rate apartments to support young professionals, empty nesters, and individuals in early stages of faintling formation. So, this isn't, this is the exact type of apartment complex that the initial housing study completed in July of twenty-one told us that we needed to focus on, and so that's what we did, following the direction from that last version.
And I, I don't disagree with that data, it's, again, a hundred and fifty of the unit, of the thirty-eight million dollars, thirty-seven. It's, it's a very large, uh, leap from that.
Actually, there is no commitment to a hundred and fifty. The architects still haven't finished the plans yet, and from what I understand, it's probably gonna be more like one forty there. They touted the one forty to one fifty, so we don't know what the end number will be. The end number, we will make sense for the lot size and for the market, but if I could add, I was at mayor's school last weekend, I got to talk to mayors building a similar development. We don't have anything like this in Richmond, Wayne County, we don't have anything like this in six counties, this resort-style living, it just simply doesn't exist, so I can't compare it with anything locally. With everything Chester Heights is doing, it's, it's nothing compared to what this is gonna be with resort-style living. So, go half an hour south of Indianapolis, and the mayor down there is building three hundred units at a cost of eighty-nine million dollars. If we were building three hundred units, that would be, um, we would be paying a lot less than that. So, our, our cost overall is less, so you imagine the rents at his would be more. But his rents are surprisingly more, he's looking at five hundred dollars more a month for the same apartment. So, I think, if, if he's pricing those, and most of them are already rented, I don't think we'll have any problems here. We're, I think our price is right for something that doesn't exist. I think from two counties in Ohio, six counties in Indiana, we're gonna pull people we've never pulled before, because they don't have this opportunity. And it's gonna be totally different. As we heard from the developer, when they first started building these, eighty percent of them were young, single families, but suddenly over the last few years, it's really flipped to sixty, forty. Forty percent of them were empty nesters, and there's probably some empty nesters in the room here thinking like, wow, no yard to mow, you know? Lot of, lot of benefits there. So, I, our chance is, the city's committed, city and county are looking at committing eight-point-nine million dollars, and only two of that's from consolidated edit. And honestly, consolidated edit is half-city, half-county, right?
Well, more city than county.
So, uh, the two million dollars, we'll say six hundred thousand is county. The city's on a hook for eight-point-nine million, so we're not asking that much of the county, I don't think. We're all asking for a partnership, definitely.
But, but I'm a citizen in Wayne County, in Richmond, Indiana. I was voted in by residents of city, of Richmond residents.
Likewise.
To represent what they want, not what this government wants.
I am not familiar with the study that you cited, that I think I heard a four hundred and three monthly rent.
Four hundred and nine out of thirty-seven buildings in Richmond.
But that's based on current vacancies, right? That, that's what, current vacant units.
Nine-point-eight, nine-point-eight percent vacancy rate.
For those types of units.
I question that based upon, if we could look at the opposite end of the spectrum from resort-style rentals to the opposite end, which would be Section Eight housing. Uh, at recent meeting of, uh, area landlords, we started this meeting with landlords to encourage them to become Section Eight landlords, because we very much need more landlords. And the Section Eight approved rental rate for Section Eight housing, which is far from resort-style housing, um, goes from, uh, five fifty to nine hundred dollars, depending on the household size. And this is, um, I'm not saying substandard, there are, there are requirements for the livability of these apartments, but none of them, uh, Section Eight is nowhere near four hundred and nine dollars a month. So, I don't know the origin of that study, but I do, and that's for Wayne County, Indiana, in two thousand twenty-three. So, you know, at the other end of the spectrum, it's well above four hundred and nine dollars.
The other element here, Val, that I'll ask you to comment on is, you know, we're in the midst of, of coming to fruition of several different plans, including, uh, the expenditure of ARPA dollars through the HELP program, including ready funds, uh, one and two. And, and so, just last week, we got word that Earlam will be receiving twenty-five million dollars, uh, from, from Lilly. A lot of that will go into downtown Richmond. And so, the interconnectability of all of these projects, and particularly how they're tied to the Lilly grants and being used as the match for the Lilly grant. So, that twenty-five million dollars is matched by seventy or eighty million, I forget the exact number, of additional, uh, dollars, both public and private. And without that investment, uh, which relies heavily on this Elder Bearman development, there would not be twenty-five million dollars from the Lilly foundation. So, any, any further comment on that aspect of this?
Yeah, I think you make a great point. The, as Jeff said, the Earlam Lilly Grant uses this project as the match. To take that a step further, um, we're using Lilly's investment in downtown Richmond, in our community, as well as this investment and the ARPA dollars to leverage more match for already two-point-oh projects. One of them is a large downtown revitalization program that we're, um, applying for funding for, so that we could build upon all of this momentum and draw down more money from the state of Indiana to invest and help our existing building owners reinvest and revitalize their properties. So, each project is building upon one another. And I just had a meeting right before I left the office with a broker representing another downtown building. Um, they have two potential buyers interested, and they wanted to talk about all of this momentum, get all of the details, so they can take back to those buyers to show all the investment that's happening here in downtown Richmond to give them confidence in investing in this market. So, everything is playing off one another and building.
And I would, I would add to that, that we're looking at, or to see an announcement in January from, uh, from Ogra on a new stellar pro- program, uh, that we would help, we would add to, uh, the amount of money that would be coming into Wayne County for this revitalization. And all of the things that we're doing right now add to that momentum, building towards additional grants and, even more importantly, additional private investment. So, uh, this is huge, this has been five to ten years in the discussion phases, in the planning phases, and now hopefully in the fruition phases. So, uh, I fully support this investment that the EDC Board is recommending.
And I move that the commissioners approve the two-million-dollar consolidated edit EDC grant.
I would second that motion.
I have, uh, further questions? Um, Val, one of the things that has brought to my attention from local contractors, under this development, is he gonna look at getting bids from local contractors? Or how's the bid process gonna go for?
Yes, one hundred percent. The contractors they typically work with, if it's in the community this far away, they go local. It's very expensive to bring their contractors from Indianapolis. So, when they did Lawrenceburg, they did Kokomo, Logan's Ford, all those, he's like, darn, they're gonna do ours. A hundred percent local as much as possible, keeps the cost down, and it supports us, and the money comes back in our community. What was it, five, what's the projected total income?
Economic impact.
Economic impact, thank you, she's good.
We have two contractors here today, do they have any questions about that issue? I think they'll be heard.
Well, mine would be simply, you're probably, they're probably saying that, but we probably don't have anything in any of the agreements that would say that they would take bids from local contractors, and then they would work with the low-local contractor to see if they couldn't work them into the project. Local contractors need all of this work they can get, and of course, we need them. Contractors, uh, we need them to hire more, we need them to buy more stuff, buy more vehicles, build onto their buildings. We need to help them do that, and we've got an opportunity here in the next, how many years, to help local contractors that now have suffered. I did a thing a while back for The Chamber, that over fifteen years, we lost fifty-eight contractors, let alone how many people that was, and that was some time back. We haven't made that up, but we have an opportunity now that we haven't had before. These people have been here before in town, and yes, they took some bids, and that's where it stopped. Our company was one of the bidders before on the YMCA. So, what I'm saying is, I don't trust them. I'd like to see something in writing that they would seek local participation. If they need some help, I'll be glad to help them with a list of people. Now, let me tell you how this works, and we do work out of state and out of this county. When we do that, we go into an area, and we will take bids, and we will get our list together, and we will take bids from everybody we can in that area. And then, if they're not low, we try to negotiate with them, see if they can't get there. That's what we need here, and it's the right thing to do, no matter what area you go into. Whether it's Maryville, Frankfurt that we're working in, we go into those areas and we take bids, and we try to work them into the project. It's the right thing to do for all the contractors. This is our opportunity to make them whole.
I don't disagree. Ron?
Yes. We just made enough, yes, thank you.
Your, uh, any comments on that, obviously?
Put some leverage in there to make that happen, yes. Put some leverage in there to make that happen, yes. Put some leverage in, MacDavon, we're looking at five hundred twenty eight jobs in the construction phase. Twenty five million in labor income, fifty four million total economic output in Wayne County. Increase in the tax revenue by nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, now that's assuming those are local workers. If we can get the local workers to do the local work.
This is our opportunity to help these locals grow their business. They can grow their business, they can get the workers.
Definitely. So, so you'll work on the language to see that, uh, we take as much advantage from this. As we possibly can.
That would be something to be in the development.
Buy local.
There's a lot on the horizon, you heard schools talking last week about needs that see thirty million. Probably not going to do that in one fell swoop, and it's feasible, but certainly ten to fifteen. I have concerns over availability of labor to meet that need, and I think. Those are issues that are gonna have to be dealt with by the group, and that best dealt with by sitting down with people like Dan. And utilizing the resources that are here.
This could even give rise to a make my move two point O for skilled tradesmen and construction workers. No, they can't work from home, they have to put their back in it.
Well, I'd like, you know, I guess a few more words, statements, and we can finalize. You know, I I don't wanna make it very clear, I'm all for downtown by revitalizing it. But I also think that I have issues with this project, because we have forgotten about the. The business owners who have have worked extremely hard for decades and have survived COVID. Good economic times, bad economic times, and I've spoken to a lot of these owners downtown. And have gotten zero support for the Alverbeerman project, and most of it's because they have been forgotten. Ron, this is not geared towards you at all, because unfortunately, you have, you weren't, you weren't a mayor, you were in city council, but you weren't mayor. And they have felt like they have been abandoned and they can't support this project because of that. And because I'm an elected official and too many politicians have been elected. And forget where they came from and why they were elected, I refuse to do that. My people that I've spoke to have said, we're not for that, and that's why I'm not gonna vote for this project. Because I'm here to represent the people, government doesn't always know best. And I think we're taking this project as what I call the spaghetti rule, let's throw it up against the wall and see if it sticks. Because we don't have a comprehensive plan for downtown. Um, I've been saying that for months, we need to get a comprehensive plan for all of downtown. The the Lilly grant is a great thing, but they've already earmarked projects and buildings. So the business owners down there, they won't even have the opportunity to apply for money for the Lilly grant. So again, they are felt like they've been left out.
I don't disagree with you.
But we do have two million dollars we're investing from the health program, and we are going to bat for them for ready two point O. We've combined all of the downtown.
I I hear you, and they hear you, but they haven't seen that, so they're like. They will, you know, so based on that, I I I am not gonna vote in favor of it.
And that's, and that's your prerogative, absolutely, I've seen uh, the planning, the work that's going into this during the last five or six years. We have through the health program. Put in in place some initiatives that will support downtown Richmond, downtown Cambridge. The other areas, the city is is contributing money in that regard in the downtown of Richmond. Uh, so if we need to add to that, we can do that, we can we can include that in our our base expenditures. But I think we're headed in the right direction, I think there's support, momentum building. I've talked to people who do support this project and the general direction that we're moving in. I agree that there needs to be some focus uh, in the city on on a downtown plan, there has been some. Let's keep building on that, uh, and what is happening now with with the uh, Earlham Lilly grant. With help with this project, uh, I think are all moving in the right direction.
And if I didn't feel that this would be a great benefit to our local business owners, our downtown merchants. Uh, I think in a few years, they will find that this will be the greatest um, boom to their business. That they've seen from government in a long.
I've told Val and I've told many people, I'll be the first one in line to say, you know what, I'm glad it's successful, I'm hoping it's successful. I'm only voting based on what I've been understood, so.
And I'm voting according to what I've seen in other progressive communities who have taken that leap. Of public-private partnership to advance their communities going forward.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, uh, with a second, further discussion from commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed? The motion passes two to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In your motion, we didn't hear that you are going to consider local help.
We talked through that issue, this is a city.
That's the city.
It's a city project.
Have to talk to Mayor Leck.
What these gentlemen want is something that says.
You're not, you're spokesman, you're the county auditor, this is not your meeting, so I I understand.
So.
Happy to talk.
Ron, is that something?
I spent the last three years working for local contractor, yes.
Alright, that's fine.
Thank you for your participation, thank you for being here, uh, let's move on. Kim, no, we're ready to talk to her.
Section eight rooms go up to twelve hundred dollars.
That's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, but you're convincing landlords, section eight tenants is the.
Yeah, thank you. We have some challenges with those programs. So we we definitely have a housing issue.
Huge.
National, I mean, it's it's not just to every, every county in Indiana. Has housing challenges.
I mean, we could probably build five hundred single family residents and they'd be sold immediately. But again, getting developers to come in and put the money, it's a lot of money to build a single family subdivision, I've done it, I know what it's like, how much it costs.
Even those housing developers, those single family developers are gonna require some public support for infrastructure. It's it's a, it's a trend nationally.
We can't promise our economic development, industrial development, labor. Our our workforce isn't here to make any promises until we do housing, it's not chicken egg, it's housing workforce. Housing has to come before workforce.
Kim?
You can at least smile, it's almost Christmas.
She hurts.
I'll try. I have a couple of things for you, the first one, um, this was actually, you voted on this back in. May or June with Dunn regarding some changes with the TRURX. So this is asking for a signature for the pharmacy benefit plan design.
Is that all three of us?
No.
President?
Yes.
Anything else for signatures, how many?
So you don't need action, you just need a signature.
Okay, what else have you got?
Well, you're, did you have something else I don't wanna?
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait till you're finished. I want your expertise on that.
Okay, so do we have something to pass out to you? And I'd like to explain it, this just came to light, I need to bring it to commissioners, they asked. Okay, so the first page of what I just passed out is just a copy of our, what, our tuition reimbursement section four point one three. From the employee handbook that was actually approved, uh, March twenty ten. And the reason I'm giving that to you is because the recorder's office has an employee, chief deputy. Who is wanting to participate and complete some different leadership classes. And so the request, as I go through this and I'll kind of give you the facts, but the bottom line is, the request is going to be. Can this individual chief deputy uh, complete some of these uh, classes and training? On by being on the clock with the county, or do they need to be off the clock and use their own time? So the first one is a high performance leadership academy. That one has already been paid for and it is not out of general fund, it's out of the recorder's perpetuation fund. And it's for one thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars. So they are requesting that this individual, every Friday for twelve weeks, for two hours. Be able to stay on the clock and complete this um, course. And the next handout I gave you is going to be for a certified public manager. That is a two-year program that will run first year at seventeen ninety five, second year eighteen ninety five in cost. And the request is, it's gonna, it's an all-day class, one day a month up in Fishers. And again, that's what the request is, can they complete this on or off the clock? So that's a commissioner's decision.
They're not requesting travel expense, or would that also be paid by perpetuation fund?
That I don't know.
They're they're not requesting funding for the tuition on that one?
They they will be, they have not paid for it yet, have not registered, have not paid.
So all they're asking us for is to allow that individual to work on the clock, that's the only request today?
Go to school on the clock.
Go to school on the clock, so.
Maybe travel and school.
So really, our policy is a reimbursement, talking about the tuition. It's not really registration, this is tuition, uh, it's not coming out, it's not, we're, there, it's being paid upfront, it's not really a reimbursement. I'm just gonna caution you and give you the facts that uh, completing this on county time. Could be opening up a can of worms for other departments, I mean, we wanna promote education leadership. But you're gonna get other requests for this if you if you allow one to complete this, you know, on the clock, so do you, so.
So if you didn't authorize that, they would have to take their personal time.
Sick, oh, not sick. Yeah, no, not doing sick, vacation in person, I misspoke.
Yes, no, it is a quandary, because we really want our people to to get more educated to help.
Absolutely.
Serve the citizens of Wayne County by, you know, but then again, we don't wanna every. But I I see very little downside to it, more of an upside, really allowing our. Cause how many, we're not gonna have eighty people a year do this, you know, maybe one or two that want to do this. Cause it is a big time commitment and a lot of work, I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be more requirements from them outside the.
There will be, and then one, let me check your site.
What are, what are the areas we're talking?
Um, we have the recorder's chief deputy is requesting to complete, to go through a high performance leadership academy. For twelve weeks, um, and asking to complete that course on county time.
Twelve, five day weeks?
No, it would be two hours every Friday for twelve weeks.
Somebody tell me if I'm incorrect on this, but isn't our recorder on her last term?
Yes, this is the next in line.
Next year?
She's, this is the chief deputy.
That's what I'm saying, but but.
Want to do three years?
Yeah, cause.
This is the chief deputy, probably wants to educate herself more, maybe prepare herself for. Being the recorder if she runs.
No, I I I think it's commendable, I think, you know, we need to think through that unintended consequences. Um, we also have have asked that uh, we put together a committee to review. Personnel policy, this is part of the personnel policies. So, uh, you know, if you look at the last, the last paragraph of that handout. Wayne County does not provide for reimbursement of monetary assistance, et cetera, et cetera. Being post-secondary education. This is not strictly speaking, post-secondary education is more a training program. But it's a lengthy one, obviously. The law state puts on the certified public manager, are there credit hours involved?
Don't know.
The content law. Probably need to do that. If we make a final decision, and is this, is this an allowable expense? Under what we currently know of the perpetuation fund.
That I don't know, I'm sure.
Just did an amendment, right, that been allowed for.
It would have been allowed.
Well, she has to, I think she has to specify.
But it hasn't specified fairly particularly. This is basically forty eight hours, the request, um, is forty eight hours.
So we have time to.
How do we handle truck drivers and their CDL training?
We have callbacks and we have reimbursement, basically, actually, we actually pay you, we pay you the tuition as it goes, but we have a callback if they don't say.
It's hard to clawback working on the clock, clawback wages?
And the and the uh, the highway department staff do it on the clock, that's.
I wouldn't think, yeah, I would think that this is, that's kind of.
And so does, so do sheriff's deputies when they go to the academy.
Police academy.
Yeah, like when the deputies go to the academy, they're paid. They're paid to go to the academy.
We have a lot of exceptions to four point one three.
Yeah, sounds like.
That's this thing.
It's part of our personnel policy on tuition reimbursement.
And what about the assessors?
I would not consider attendance at the academy as tuition necessarily, because it's preconditioned.
Job.
And so CDLs?
It is for certain jobs, not for everyone.
But but we have a need for CDLs.
Perhaps the difference is it certainly is a condition of employment.
And so are are levels too.
These where you're not looking at a, at a discreet certification that is directly job-related to what they're doing in front of government. But basically personal enhancement, then, you know, you may wanna talk to council, I put the cap on it, first come for sort of an annual basis. But I think it'd be, I think, I think it's commendable if people want to do it, and I think you're gonna have. Doors being knocked down, people wanting to do it, unfortunately.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we had that problem.
But we do have callbacks, uh, for example, when there was a sheriff's deputy who took, um. A computerized accident investigation course.
For accident research.
We did clawback, because he went to Hamilton County. Right after he finished his.
Best, I believe, he he actually paid that callback himself, and I may have.
After calling all the commissioners and begging us to have mercy.
He may have gotten reimbursed, but I, the way it was presented, I don't think, at least in your. But no, we, you're right, we've had, we have callbacks in that, I'm like, you're right, I don't know how you call back forty hours.
Cash reimbursement of hours worth?
I mean, it's not unusual in the business world to have, you enhance individuals or promote. Him to go back and get a degree, whether it be a bachelor's master. When you have callbacks in there, you have to maintain employment for X amount of years after receiving that, or you have to pay back.
We just do that on a reimbursement basis, we figure terrible investment in front end, we'll support it in the rear end.
What do you do about time, do you allow time off from work to do it?
With all the, all the out of, off hours of learning opportunities now, whether it's virtual, you know. If they need in, to be in class for tests or something like that, yes, we've done that, we don't have, again, we have staff of fifteen and I. Right now, we don't have anybody doing it, and I think we only have eighty two.
He is in school, he's in school every day.
I mean, we can take it under oath, maybe get some.
Been a while since you had personnel policy kind of. Been a while since you had your personnel policy kind of looked at thoroughly.
Yes, it's.
I just want to make sure that they're very clear that it's not something that we're trying not promote them to do, that we just have to do some more investigation.
This, this course starts January the eighth, it's already paid for, but January the eighth, so.
Okay.
It's already paid for, so we just, we can be retroactive, I mean.
But they're going to be out. Does the other one start?
I do not see a start date on this second, it's through fall state.
I'll talk to Devon and see additional information.
Our next meeting is January third, so we could decide this January third.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm bothered, by the way, for thirteen reads out, because we shall not, you know. Why do we need to tie your hands? Why not at least say we have the discretion on a case-to-case basis? A good word is shall not.
And you know assessors are on the clock while they're working on their level twos and threes? I'm guessing they're on the clock working on it?
Not for study, but for their classes.
I only think this one course, I don't know about the other one, direct management. I mean, I think they're all.
I mean, they don't have to be promoted. For level two, yes, mandatory, but for level three, that's for promotion, so, you know, there's a lot of gray here.
I mean, yeah, spending thirty years in education.
We're relying on you on this one.
My bias is to allow it, but there's a cost associated with it. And so then, when you start getting, so many people taking classes that I need in person because of Corona, you know, potentially is a slippery slope. Probably, in all reality, it wouldn't become that way, but we need to.
And we're not broke.
Go into this with our eyes open, exactly.
And we're not broke, so.
We're not broke, we've, we've managed the finances, the county very well over the years, so we can afford to do this if we choose to, and we put some guardrails around it, so. In the meantime, I really want to stress that we need to get the review committee started this season.
So are we leaving this, that you're going to talk to Debbie on this one now, right now, then?
Because how she enters Cronos on January eighth is at stake, so we really must decide this at our next meeting.
Well, she, she is exempt, but still needs to be accounted for.
Oh, that's right, she's exempt.
So if she does this and you allow this, we're just going to instruct her to put her notes into Cronos. Two hours was dedicated to an approved program, or what have you.
Unfortunately, she's exempt, yeah.
Yeah, so she's exempt, that's, that's all I have, except I'll get that.
I do have a question. I'm getting inquiries from people who are going to be with their families in the next week, and they're kind of trying to plan spring breaks and family gatherings and stuff like that, and they're asking about exactly what is our policy on April the eighth, the solar eclipse day? And I honestly couldn't tell them exactly how long this building's going to be open. Have we told employees exactly what our policy is on?
Probably no, I mean, we made a decision on that.
But I don't think we've told employees what our policy is on how long this building's going to be open, and if they need to take a, a personal time on that date. There's some confusion, I think it'd be helpful if before the close of business on Friday, we let them know, because this is the weekend and week that families make plans for the coming months.
Any of them are free to take the whole day off if their supervisors agree to that. I think what, what we've discussed doing is to close the building to the public, buildings to the public at noon, and give the department heads the ability to allow people to take time off any afternoon. So that's my.
I thought that's what we did, accrue time off.
Or, or vacation time.
Yeah, they can't take non-pay.
Right, it's not a holiday, because that would cost us a fortune, since we'll have hundreds of people on the job.
So, so that's my understanding, I don't know that, that something like this Friday is necessary, but I'm not opposed to that, if we can confirm that we've actually done that. Why don't we just, instead of checking back, why don't we reaffirm that that's our intent? And if we can, if we can make that all the way to our.
We discussed this with department heads, didn't we? But not elected officials, as I recall, department heads had no objection to that, as I recall?
And, and you know, the issue becomes in the courthouse. We may not be able to close that building to public, and I don't know.
State courts.
And there might even be an issue with probation. They might send somebody directly out of court, right? So, so.
We don't have those issues resolved.
Understand what our intention is, and now let's follow up with nailing down which buildings can be opened. You know, I intended to put this on the agenda for our next elected officials joint meeting with the department heads to nail down exactly what we can and cannot do. Primarily, it's, it's the court employees that will have issues and will need to talk to them.
We can't send.
I thought it's always closed to the public. You can go visit anytime you want, Jeff, but can I?
Well, that's good.
Until we resolve the court issue, we can't send out a message.
That's my thought.
Yeah, if that's not resolved.
We'll read on, on what, what we suppose, right?
I'll just tell them, you know, if you, if you want to be home with your children that are not in school, because all the schools are closed, then put in for a day off, personal day, vacation day, whatever. Do it soon.
I think we have one more thing that we need to cover. Didn't, wasn't there something about a lawnmower?
Yeah.
Did we cover that?
I'm going to, I'm going to get what we're on.
I saw that on the agenda, so I just wanted to make sure.
I just wanted to see if, if you're having issues with that, if you had a pin.
No, not yet.
And we can handle that with Cronos and everything. It's sort of an HR issue, because there will be possibly more people wanting to take the day off than we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you just circle back on that, your time off for this training, or what you call it. Remember, one of the things on that third paragraph that comes into play is if you do pay for that, and it falls under those guidelines of a fringe benefit, and you're actually taxed on it. So that's why that third paragraph is written the way it's written.
As the author of that third paragraph, you're. Well, again, you should be on that committee that reviews the.
Well, I reconvene, exactly, Kim and I already talked. Need to get this together.
We do.
That, that committee and the annex security committee. Good deal. Anything else?
Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, we'll see you back here in January. Coming back in January.
All right. It's been a long year, my first year's been interesting, I've learned a lot. You're in your thirteenth month. Feel like it's my thirtieth month, but, but it's been interesting, but I'll be back.
Good deal. We look forward to it.
I bet you do.
Absolutely. All right, if there's nothing else, you'll adjourn. Thanks, everybody.